I call this meeting the Upshur County Commission to Order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jackie, would you like to read the minutes last time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning Jackie.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, has their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, March 6, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting door. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, County Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Megan, Palmeroy County Administrator, Carrie Wallace, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacklin D. Walker Secretary. We begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. Megan Palmeroy introduced and welcomed Carrie Wallace, who is filling the position of Assistant County Administrator. After reading the minutes on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of February 27, 2014, as admitted. Elizabeth Rafferty, Upshur County Parish House/Cross Lines Director, appeared before the Commission and provided an overview of services provided by the agency. Cross Lines provides assistance to low-income recipients in the form of food, clothing, transportation, and monetary help for housing and utilities, furnishings, medical and educational needs. Ms. Rafferty expressed appreciation for the continued support of the Upshur County Commission. Ms. Rafferty provided financial data and requested funding for fiscal year 2014/2015. The Commission will review and consider the request during budget meetings. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of requests from Bakken Youth Football Representative James Donan to use the practice fields located at the Upshur County Wellness Complex. Rick Edwards, Bakken Upshur recreational park advisor board member, advised that the park board will be meeting next week and requested that the Commission refer requests for field usage to the park advisory board for scheduling. Mr. Edwards expects to see an increase in usage requests and expressed concerns about scheduling conflicts and/or rental monopolization of fields by individual groups. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved request to use fields with a stipulation that scheduling be reviewed with park advisory board. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the resignation of Brenda Askew as librarian at the James W. Curry Library effective March 12, 2014. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved resignation of Mavis Shiflett as West Virginia University Upshur County Extension Office Forge Program Assistant effective March 28, 2014. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved Desiree Colen and Harley Squires as volunteers for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four new information items. Number one, building permit report, February 2014. Two, Region 7 Planning and Development Council, comprehensive economic development strategy. Priority list update through March 14, 2014. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved to place a value of 25 points to the Alkins Road Public Service District Base Three Water Extension Project and to place a value of 20 points to the Alomar Project Deployment Project. All other projects will be made as listed. Number three, Upshur Bakken Health Department proposed revision to Upshur County Clean Indoor Air Regulation comments requested through March 30, 2014. Number four, invitation to the Records Management and Preservation Board Grant Award Ceremony from the West Virginia Division of Culture and History. Number five, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number six, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, not. Number seven, Upshur County Budget Guardians as listed. Number eight, meetings as listed. Number nine, appointments needed or accounted as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following accelerations and/or refunds as listed. And, okay, there's a correction here. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office as listed. The Commission reviewed the budget proposals. Individual meetings are scheduled for review with county officials, and department supervisors through Friday, March 14. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:30 p.m.
Are there additions or corrections to the minutes read?
I'll leave the appearance red.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All saying, motion carries. Thank you Jackie. On today's agenda, we have no appearances scheduled, so we'll then go into the items for discussion, action, or approval. And number one, the whole version, I believe we might receive the list at this point.
No, I want to push that to next week.
We have a wellness county complex facility use agreement, which we discussed last week. Mr. Edwards, a member of that board, requested that the scheduling of the wellness complex be handled or overseen by the board, and as such, a document has been prepared which reflects the requirements for organizations to use of all this complex.
And actually, just as a note, I received this, and I was under the impression that this had been used in the past, but it has not, there are significant changes that need to be made to this document.
Okay, so we, okay, so we will review this agreement to ensure its accuracy and complies with all legal qualifications. Very good. And for information items, the community participation grant for Banks District Volunteer Fire Department on $4,000 to run July 1 of 2012 through June 30 of 2014, the amount of, again, $4,000, and I believe that that money is to be used to purchase some equipment by the Banks District Fire Department. The Correspondent State of West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, approval of Upshur County Emergency Zone Map Adjustments, and basically, a meeting was held on February 21, and the West Virginia Fire Commission met with a motion, and a motion was made to accept Emergency Zone Map Adjustments. Information was presented that all Upshur County Fire Chiefs had signed Emergency Zone Map indicating their approval. This motion was passed unanimously, and the map will be placed in the Fire Marshal's, State Fire Marshal's office for future reference. We have the ADR Public Service District Auditor's Report. We do not have a copy attached here, but I understand that there's no conflicts or any issues regarding.
Uh, no, I just, I have, the report is actually under, it's fairly large, so I have it because I didn't want to.
But there were no, it's a clean report. So, next we have the West Virginia Regional Jail, February invoice for $46,368.25, which is lower than the last several months. That's a good sign, hopefully it'll be maintained at that point or lower for future. We got the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Cat Report for February, and the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Officer Dog Report for February. We have a Small Cities Block Grant and Neighborhood Stabilization Program Fair Housing Monthly Activity Report Survey. The report and survey requires that I, we must submit, or it must be submitted to, I guess, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or Small Cities Block Grant. Fair Housing Monthly Activity Report by May 31 of this year, and I completely submit the attached survey, and I've been informed that Shane Whitehair, who is the Administrator for Region 7, has responsibility for submitting those documentations to cover. We have a James D. Curry Scholarship Application Period. We have sent copies of those to the high school, and we retain copies here at the County Commission of any high school graduate, or senior, this year senior to be graduating, who requests a consideration for that scholarship. That is a $2,000 scholarship over a two-year period, $500 per semester, to one boy and one girl. I remember last year, there were no girls that applied, so we spoke with the board, and of course, we oversee it, and decisions made to award the two grants to two males last year, so we hope to, uh, we'll have females as well as males apply for the scholarships this year. And the late Mr. Curry is re-commended for his foresight in providing that funding for these scholarships to our local students. Again, does a notice of meetings, must montide, anything there, Donnie, that bears discussion?
No, no, thanks, Donnie. We didn't make the last meeting because of the, we're due later.
Okay, very good. Any public announcements, any comments? Mr. Edwards?
Sorry, I'm having a question. Jill, it's under our attention that at the last city council meeting last Thursday, Mitch Tacey stood up and again explained the need for the 911 to address end mapping issue, as far as still, they have not received that data. We understand this going on about two years, and we understand that also, there's the issue with the insurance. But I've got to implore the two governments to come together to find a resolution of this situation. We're talking about the public safety here, not just about who's got what, who can write on what, and who can change what. We understand the responsibilities. I think read-only is an option. I'm not professional here, so I don't know that, but I've got to implore the two governments to come together and resolve this situation, not just with the city, but with the volunteer fire departments. That's all I have.
I would agree with you wholeheartedly. Have you had the opportunity to read the agreement between, memorandum of understanding between the county and the city?
I'm not sure it's been made public.
Well, I'll let you read the copy. How about you read the last paragraph on that, please? We can read the whole thing, but the pertinent part of that is the last paragraph.
All right.
Highlighted in yellow.
Uh, "The City of Bacchanon, BFD, will provide certificate of insurance that provides proof of the limits of liability of any and all insurance coverage. In addition, the City of Bacchanon, BFD, will add the Upshur County officials, employees, agents, affiliates, consultants, and/or advisors as an additional insured on any such liability policy. This agreement is conditional upon receipt of said certificate of insurance. Should the certificate of insurance lapse, or should Upshur County be removed from the City of Bacchanon, BFD insurance policy during the period of this agreement, the agreement will be immediately terminated. As of the date of lapse or removal, and the City of Bacchanon, BFD will, will be required to immediately return to Upshur County all written confidential information, together with all taxes or extracts thereof. And the City of Bacchanon, BFD shall destroy all evaluation material with such destruction confirmed in writing to Upshur County by City of Bacchanon." That's a really long sentence. I didn't want to go that long. "And when this thereof, the parties here to cause this agreement to be instituted duly authorized, are sent as of the 21st day of November, 2013," and I see a sign with me and Mr. Tenny and Mr. Davidson's signatures. And we understand that, and so does the city. But the real truth of the matter is, is there not some way that, and we all understand, the city has the issue with this certificate of insurance or being a writer thereof.
They signed the agreement indicating that they would provide it, and many of us, I saw from the article in the paper, that many were, believed this matter had been resolved, and we were awaiting the receipt of the certificate. It had not been received, and it appears, again, I'm, I've not discussed it with anyone in the city, but it appears that, according to the article anyway, that they're not willing to provide that certificate, which they agreed to in that particular memorandum.
It all comes down to the certificate of insurance, which the agreement, which was signed by me, and the mayor said they would surprise, provide the certificate of insurance, namely, the Upshur County Commission is an additional insured. It's something that's done everywhere. I do it my little landscaping business when I work for some firms. Many large firms require me to insure them under my liability insurance, list them as additional insured. I contact my insurance company, give them the proper information, they list that on there, they get a copy of it, says they're an additional insured on my liability plan. That's all it is. They agreed to do it, they signed the agreement, and what bothers me in that article?
Yeah.
They said, Mr. McCauley said, that the County Commission reneged on our agreement. You just read the agreement, that the city side said they would provide that, that additional insured on their insurance policy, and now they're not, now they're saying they're not going to do it, which, which if, don't, the city, don't you renegue on your contract, number one, and number two, don't say we're reneging when you're the one that's reneging on it.
As a further explanation, the fully related to that, the agreement to lease or to use the wellness facility that your board that you're on, Parks and Recreation, would authorize and have these people sign, has a stipulation there that the athletic teams that would use that facility would indemnify us for a million dollars, similar to what we're requesting from the city. And if, if a little league team, or a football team, or a soccer team can secure from an insurance company such an agreement, we cannot, that is, the Commission can understand what the issue is with the city. These are, I think at one point, we had, there might have been a misunderstanding as to whether we wanted to have total indemnification from all aspects, and that was explained to their city manager, that no, that was not the case. This was the one limited area that we wished our insurance carrier, it's not a matter that we don't want to have this agreement work, it's not a matter that we don't wish for the county and the city to work together on this mutual matter, but our insurance carrier, we are required, as a matter of liability, to protect the citizens of the county from future suits that might be brought upon us by errors or acts on part of city employees or volunteer firemen. I mean, we all recognize the importance of, of public safety and, you know, for the citizens, but it appears that this is just something that, at least the way it's been explained to us is very simple, it's conducted the normal day of, not matter of business, during routine by businesses, by private individuals like Mr. Tenny indicated in his business.
Yes, sir.
There should not be this, in my opinion, should be not this hesitance to, to obtain this, you know, certificate, but for some reason, and I don't know.
You know, and, and I appreciate your comments, and Mr. Tenny, I agree with you wholeheartedly. In fact, I took offense to the reneging, actually at that meeting, I, I felt it was offensive, because I've been here during the discussions, I've seen the issue, and I've watched it develop as it has gotten so far, and I, I do believe that both parties, or both governments truly have the citizens at heart and the safety, and I absolutely know that Mitch Tacey, the chief does, and, and since I've been participating with the Volunteer Academy, you know, the Firefighters Academy, I've gotten to a little bit, learned a little bit more about this issue, and it really is important, but what I'm doing as a private citizen to say for you now is saying it's about time that these two governments get together, and I don't know, and who's involved, and we don't really care, all we want to know is make sure that our departments, in any department that needs that information, get it out, and that's what I come up for, and I just wanted to bring that out.
And I might, I might clarify one issue on that point, so. Now, Ms. Bennett's here, and if you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that information is available to them, through the web hosting, right?
It is, and that's what I come in with. I have documentation to show exactly what you're saying. Um, you know, for those who are not aware, the Upshur County Commission maintains a web hosting site that has every layer of my information on that site that can be accessed by a username and password through the internet. We maintain that site. It is a read-only format, so there cannot be any changes made. Once it's downloaded onto the internet, if you have a username and password, then you can have access to that site. I have, on April 4, 2011, I received an email from Mayor Kenny Davidson asking me to give a username and password to Mitch Tacey. On April 5, I responded with an email to Mr. Davidson giving Mitch Tacey a username and password to that web hosting site. I briefly looked through this stack of paper. I don't see that Mitch Tacey has ever logged on to the site myself, but now that was just a real quick, you know, look, just briefly, but I can tell you, since March 1, the city has accessed that site 38 times. So, I mean, the city is using it. I mean, I have record, every time they log on with their username and password, it's, it's logged into this. They access it thousands and thousands of times since 2011, when that site was created. So, they have the information. It's just a matter of going on to the site and viewing it, and other representatives are doing just that.
From the city.
From the city.
The volunteer departments as well, using it occasionally or regularly?
We gave access to a couple of the fire departments as early as just last year, the end of last year, and there's been a couple. I think Rock Cave has logged on a few times. They're certainly not hitting it as regularly as, you know, like the county clerk's office, the sheriff's office, or whomever, but, um, you know, there's a number of citizens, or a number of representatives of the City of Bacchanon who have access to that site. They have their own username and password, so they have the information.
So, apart from this agreement, they have access, the only difference, my understanding, between what they have access to now through password over the internet, the only difference in what they're wanting is, aren't they wanting that on a disk? Is that correct? They want that on a different, a different?
Format.
Format. And from what I understand, and again, the last time we spoke with them directly was a while ago, but from what I understand, the reason that they want that on a disk is so that they can attach information to it. So, they don't, from what I understand, they don't want the read-only format, because if that's all there, we have access to it, they want to be able to alter the information. Maybe not alter it, but add additional information, which is why we would like the certificate of liability.
Which we have no control over, the information or changes they would make for their purposes.
So, then what would happen if we gave them, whatever format was, we'll say a disk or some, we give them the information as of today, then they would go in and update whatever they want to update, I don't know, is, are the city fire hydrants on the information that?
The city maintains their own record of the fire hydrants. I do have that, but they provided it to me. I mean, they are the ones who gave us that information. We didn't go out and gather that information ourselves.
Okay, so they had the information, like on the fire hydrants, and then what about, what about situations like if there's someone that I know, Mr. Ferry had a list of people that were on oxygen or that type of thing? Is that on our web hosting, or is that a separate list that Mr. Ferry or someone has?
From what I understand, that's a separate list that he keeps in case of emergency to be able to go out and help people in the community that have special needs.
Right, and is that available to the fire departments?
Um, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure there was someone that needed help that, I mean, that's the purpose of the list at Williams, that they would be able to go and help them.
But I guess the point I'm making is, if you gave them on a disk or whatever format, the information's available today, then six months from now, all those additional changes you've made are not on that disk. So, every, they would have to get a new disk, and then, and back here's a computer, here behind you, Terry Joe.
You.
But, you know, if you've got something on a disk of today, and then you update that, I'm not sure how hard it would be when then there's updates from the county.
The best thing, in my opinion, would be have centralized databases, which you already have, and you already have available on the web, and maybe the fire chief for Bacchanon just never got the information fastened from City Hall, maybe a disconnect there, if he's never logged on, you know?
I don't know if he has. I didn't really have a good chance to really review each one. I mean, there's hundreds of pages there, so I don't know if he has or hasn't.
Is there some way that, not just City of Bacchanon, but say, fire departments, is there some way that through the web hosting, some way they can do something to add additional stuff on to that without changing that, or is that possible?
Of course, I'm not a computer person either, so I'll just throw that out there right now. You know, I guess, to try to get people to understand the way my address in the mapping project works, every structure that I've assigned an address to has its own unique identification number. So, you know, I'm sure that there's a way that they can take the information from the web hosting and maybe create a database, or, or, you know, their own program, specialized program, or whatever, and in some way, using that UID number to reference it, so if they type in the UID number, maybe it goes to that particular site. You know, I, I don't know, but, I mean, all of that information is there on the web hosting. I do know that. But, I mean, apart from that, you know, I, I feel like the county has been more than generous of trying to share our information, you know, in, in as much as we can without jeopardizing our own self and our own liability with it, but I think we're missing the point that the City of Bacchanon chose to back out of our addressing and mapping project, and they are the ones who need to maintain their records within the city. Our information that we have is not accurate information within the corporation boundary, because we did it based on our numbering scheme of every 10.5, 6 feet. That's not the, that's not the addresses those individuals in the, in the city are using. The city is supposed to be maintaining their own addressing and mapping within the corporation limits. So, I mean, even if we do share this information, and I'm an advocate for doing just that, it's still not valid information for them, just like whenever I download it from my system and send it to the 911 center, it's not current, up-to-date, correct information. We've never changed over the city limits, because that's what the city was supposed to do whenever they backed out of our project and adopted their own ordinance.
They were supposed to?
Maintain their own addresses, just like we do.
Were they supposed to give that to us, so we could put that in our system?
They're, they need to maintain it in some fashion that they can forward it to us and/or to the 911 center.
So, apart from all this, still, the information that we have available for the city and the city limits is wrong?
Correct.
Simply of course, and I think when we talked about this, maybe Commissioner Brady asked the question, why did we go ahead and change all the city's addresses and then not use it? Well, it was because we went ahead and did it all, and then at the very end, they said, oh, we don't want to participate. That's after we had gone through all the expense of changing all the city addresses according to the new addressing and mapping guidelines. At that point, then the city said, oh, by the way, we want, at the very last minute, I mean, they said, hey, we're going to opt out, we're going to go around. So, the whole, the whole issue here is, the information that they're wanting about the city, if they have, and we don't have.
Okay, that's what I take it for you, because I think there's a confusion, not only, and thank you, Terry Joe, for actually explaining a lot of that, that was left out of the last council meeting. And I being here, actually, when the city decided to opt out of that, I do recall the Commission saying, this may not be a good idea. If you really want to keep a flow between all of the communities, you would need to be involved in this, and I, I recall when the city did that. All I wanted to do is make sure that it's brought out again, at least from your side also, because I was a little offended by the way, they made it sound as though it is your fault that the media have not, that Bacchanon has not been able to obtain information, and that you're stonewalling them. On this hand, I, I have to disagree with them. I believe a part of it is their fault for not actually being involved in the first place in this whole program. But, all I wanted to do is bring that forth, and thank you, Mr. Rafferty, for letting me see that. I assume this is a matter of public record for any citizen to be able to hold up for the city?
Megan, yeah, thank you, Greg. Megan, Megan can buy copies, any part of the public wishes to.
Well, I think there's one other point that needs to be made, because part of the discussion has been to give this information to the county fire departments, and it is available through the web hosting, through the password, where they can go and access on the internet. Now, along with this same thought process is, if they had a disk, or whatever format's on, to put in a laptop computer. on, to put in a laptop computer, the expense in that computer being able to read that data would be, how much is ARC editor, how much does it cost?
The software itself is, I'm thinking, somewhere around, around $15,000, just for the software, but then you have to have kind of a souped-up computer in order to run it, because if you're pulling an extreme amount of data, you know, at the time when we purchased ours, we did a joint project with the city, or I'm sorry, with the assessor's office downstairs, because they're using ARC editor in order to do their parcel data. So, you know, we, we got a discounted rate at that point because we bought four stations, basically, and the software, so. And then it costs, I'm thinking, and Megan, you might quote me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking it costs somewhere between $6,000 every year for us to maintain that software in a maintenance contract.
And I believe the last time we talked to Wes, he indicated that he didn't even know if that information could be utilized on a laptop, correct?
Right.
Because it's so large, he didn't think that a laptop could...
Even with ARC editor.
That came from whom? That information came from whom?
Wes, who does the, he works on that mapping program for us.
So you're talking $20,000 and maybe the laptop probably wouldn't even be big enough to run it anyway?
Jerry, has any of the fire departments in Upshur County received a disk or anything from 911 or whoever is going to disperse this?
They have access to all that information.
I, I understand what you're saying, access.
Right.
But there was supposed to have been a disk or something, from my understanding, to go to each fire department.
Right.
After they executed, after they executed the certificate of insurance.
For each, say, Bank District has a fire in Adrian's area.
Right.
The closest way for them to go from Bank's district fire department to go to that fire, I don't know what part of the country to say it would be in, but, you know, there's shortcuts across the hill.
Is that information available in this system, or is that something that would not be available?
That, I'm sorry. No, each department has been giving maps, paper maps.
Right.
But I guess to specifically answer your question, we've never given them a disk with my data on it, no.
But other people have this information, but the fire departments don't.
Jerry, that's what the 911 center is for, though. That's why they dispatch and they are responsible for helping them get to the location. Even if they had that disk, this isn't like a Google, Google map where they can put in the information and get directions to the site. That's, from what I understand in my conversations, not how they intended to use it. And I sent out that MOU to every single fire department in the county, and I have never heard back from them.
But not, we've never given a disk of our data to anybody. There isn't anybody else in the county that has that data on a disk.
Then, then where the access is, through password, so that you can go on the internet and access it?
Julie Backsy with the Buchanan Fire Department and my son, both have worked on this at Buchanan. And they have both told me that if they add anything to their program that they already have, it's just going to be bridges and where water is available to them.
Right.
Through hydrants or...
Right.
A pond or whatever, because from my understanding now, it's not, if there's a fire out in the country, there's going to be four, the possibility of four fire departments responding to that because of the manpower. It has been three, but it is, from what they're talking now, is it's going to go to four.
Well, and I don't know if we have all the hydrants in the county on the ARC editor, or is that something to do?
We're working on it.
And also, if there's ponds available in the area, that could be a GPS point, and that could be filling there too, couldn't it?
Yeah, there's some impoundment sites for the light oil gas wells that we have an address on, because it's something that they need, you know, for emergency response within their system and their insurance reasons. So we've actually assigned physical addresses to like well sites as well as impoundment sites, water impoundment sites.
So this, excuse me, I've got a thought. I'm getting over the gas. So all this information that they're gathering on hydrants and sources of water could be given to the county, we could put, I'm assuming, we could put that on our, on our system, and then it would be available to everybody?
True, but...
Including them, now?
I mean, they're individuals.
Right, right, but...
They're going out doing their work themselves.
Well, are they doing it on behalf of the fire department, or?
That I could not say. They're putting it in to...
Yeah.
Some kind of a, either computer or something.
Right, but what I'm saying is, they could give, if they're, if they're attributing GPS points to anything in the city, they could give that information, it could go on the system that would be available back to them or to everybody in the county.
I guess there's a map of all, in the City of Buchanan.
The fire hydrants or...
Fire hydrants. But, I mean, I consider...
Not sure, do we have, do we have that information from the city as to where their hydrants are?
We have, the last updated information that we received from the city was in 2009. I am still working on trying to obtain updated information from them. I mean, as most recent is when they did the annexation. Right now, my system shows an incorrect boundary for the City of Buchanan. I've asked for it numerous times, Megan's asked for it numerous of times, we're still waiting on getting it.
Because of annexation and changes in the boundary because of the annexation.
Correct.
Jerry, I was going to say, I know one of the rumors that floated around several months ago was that the, somehow the county or 911 service had provided FedEx or UPS with a disk so they could use it, and that is, that is not true. I don't know where that rumor got started, but I know that created some added frustration because people, you know, rightfully so, think, well, if you give it to UPS, you can certainly give it to the fire departments, but that is not true, and I thought we addressed that several months ago during a meeting when that issue came up, but...
Periodically, I will get a call from FedEx or UPS asking for a particular road name, and I'll help guide them into it.
Right.
But they have never been given a disk of our data information for addressing the mapping, no.
No one has.
No, no one has.
Again, it boils down, in the kind of litigious world that we live in today, it is a matter of liability, and we're entrusted to protect the county residents, all residents, including those who live in the city or county residents, and, you know, to protect the county from being sued. If there is a mistake or if there is some addition that's put in that's misinterpreted, that is the necessary reason for the insurance. We're not trying to obstruct what I think everybody here recognizes as a, as a positive thing, if it can be accomplished, but we do have our responsibility, as the city does. I recognize they have their responsibilities as well, but, and it would seem that we could get together, but, you know, we've been relying on this signed memorandum of understanding, at least for five or six months now, since it was executed, believing that it was going to be, the certificate of insurance was going to be forthcoming, but it has not been forthcoming. And I don't know that we've got an adequate explanation, at least in discussing with the administrator, we've not received, we understand, an adequate explanation as to why it is not forthcoming, other than that they don't want to do it after they've agreed to provide it.
You start, Susan.
When Rick was up here, he was discussing about you having to have insurance. You're a contractor, and that's the reason that you have to come up with that amount. Anybody who gets out here and contracts under somebody else...
Right, and government agencies have liability insurance, the city has it, the county has it. And what I was comparing that to was, that's, that's just a normal, everyday course of business for businesses and government, that when you, the way it is today is basically, when you're working for someone else, they want to make sure they're covered if I do something wrong, and that's all we're asking the city. We're just saying that we want to make sure we're covered if you do something wrong. If we do something wrong, you're not going to be liable for it.
Right.
But if you do something wrong in relationship to this information that we're going to give you, then we want to make sure that we're listed as additional insured and we're covered. And it's just a normal, everyday business procedure today that happens. I mean, I think I pay $100 a year for that, for one place that I work that requires, it costs me $100 a year to list them as additional insured, and, you know, for the work I do there, it's pretty reasonable, I think, so. And that's all we're asking. It's not that we're asking for anything unreasonable, it's not that we're asking for anything that doesn't happen every day in the course of private business, government business. So, I mean, I'm, and we've had discussion after discussion, we've come to agreements, we've signed agreements, and then we turn around and see an article in the paper that says, we reneged on our, on our agreement. I mean, come on, let's just act like adults here and let's be responsible for the people we're serving. That's all we're asking, and we're willing to do everything that we've said that we possibly can do to get this information, to deliver emergency services to all the citizens of the county. We're willing to do everything we can, but then the confines of what our insurance company tells us we have to do. And that's, you know, it's kind of disturbing when you see articles like that in the paper, and JC pointed out, right there is the agreement the city said that they would do, and then they're telling us we're reneging. So, anyway, thanks for bringing that up, Rick. We didn't have anything else on this yet.
Further discussion, if not, I know we still do have some bills to...
That's fine.
That never stops.
[laughing]